Out and make your, and then vote on your, on your nominating at the, when you open up your executive meeting or?
Sure, I'd like to nominate these two, Bill, Secretary.
And then you've got one and two.
Yeah.
The existing. Being a president and vice president.
Oh. And I'd like the president and vice presidency remain the same.
Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Eyes have it five zero. And then we'll go on to our regular meeting.
All right.
First off, we'll take roll call.
All right, Mr. Hilsinger?
Here.
Mr. Sneed?
Here.
Mr. Elliott?
Here.
Mr. Cunningham?
Here.
Mr. Lawler?
Here.
Mr. Hilsinger, you have five.
We got five, okay. Need a motion for meeting minutes from December 12th, executive meeting. Take a motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Eyes have it five zero. Next item is status sheet from November 5th to January 9th. Need a motion to accept. You have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Eyes have it five zero. We just did nominating committee, no other committee reports. Then we'll go to the first item, new business, PC 37-22 needy pause rescue.
Before you ask, PC 37-22 needy pause rescue, which was a request for a conditional use permit in the C2 shopping district for 0.16 acres located on the northeast quadrant of Grabaway Road and Matilda Avenue. As the commission may recall, this is located in South County and the aerial there on the right is with the site outlined in red. Here's a larger visual of that aerial. As you can see, the site is located right off of Grabaway Road and Matilda Avenue. At the public hearing, this is the preliminary site development plan that was presented by the petitioner. As you can see, there is a one to two car driveway. They are showing two street parking spaces along the north end of Matilda Avenue and then three parking spaces on the street of Matilda Avenue heading towards Grabaway Road. The other big improvement that they had shown at public hearing was a privacy fence around the backyard. After the public hearing, staff did reach out to the petitioner to ask about the service vehicle they have for their operations, and these are the photos that they did present to staff. They also, staff also asked if any additional work would be done to the interior or exterior of the site. They did provide us with photos of the basement that they're currently renovating, as well as they put a small fence around the air conditioning unit in the backyard. They also provided us with more photos of the fence that they did put up. Staff is recommending denial of this petition. As the proposal fails the four-pronged conditional use permit test, the unsupervised overnight boarding of animals is not desirable for public health, welfare, and safety at this location. The proposed use could be a detriment to the permitted developments in the surrounding areas, specifically the residential area to the north of the site. The conditional use permits, once they are granted, run with the land. And while a pet care facility with overnight boarding or a pet rescue is a suitable use along a commercial corridor, the proposed operation as described at public hearing is not desirable. The proposed use is also not consistent with good planning practice. Most of the required parking for this use is shown on Matilda Avenue and not in the garage or driveway of the tract of land. The business vehicle associated with the proposed use is too large to be parked in the garage and would be parked on the street or in the driveway.
With that, we need a motion.
Motion for denial.
Discussion, anyone? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Eyes have it five zero. Very good report. Next, we have PC 38-22 Ameren.
Good evening. PC 38-22 Ameren, Tesson Ferry, is a request for an amended MXD on a .6 acre tract located on the west side of Tesson Ferry Road, east side of Keller Road, and northwest side of Brittonshire Road. As you recall from public hearing, the site is in South County, and there you can see it outlined in red on the aerial. As you will recall, this site is in the southeast corner of the 99 acre tract that is the Tesson Ridge Development Site. Here's the preliminary site development plan shown at public hearing. It shows a 146-foot tall tower surrounded by a six-foot tall chain link fence with barbed wire. The tower location is approximately 250 feet southwest of the closest proposed single-family lot in the Tesson Ridge Development. The department recommends that the tower be screened with a decorative site-proof fence and appropriately landscaped. The department also recommends that as much of the existing mature tree cover be maintained as possible. Additionally, the zoning ordinance requires that telecommunications towers shall not be closer to a residence district property a distance equivalent to the height of the proposed tower. And the site plan shows that the tower is about 87 feet from the southern property line and the neighboring R2 zoned property. So the property owner will need to petition the board of zoning adjustment for relief from this requirement. At public hearing, concerns were voiced about a high voltage line project along Bauer Road. Bauer Road, which is shown on this aerial in red, is about a half a mile north of the subject site and runs west of the site. The department reached out to Ameren for more information about this project. Ameren stated that the Bauer Road project does not involve high voltage electric transmission lines, rather it involves new poles and conductors and a new 34.5 KV overhead line, which will connect to the new Schusler Road substation. And they stated that a 34.5 KV line is common voltage for distribution lines that serve customers and is not considered high voltage. Ameren plans to complete this project this spring and summer, and then the Schusler Road substation is going to supply the Mercy South Site. The Bauer Road project is not related to the project before the commission tonight and has no bearing on the current request, but we presented this just as an information piece. The department is recommending approval. We find that the amended MXD procedure is an appropriate mechanism to permit a telecommunications tower greater than 40 feet in height and that this will facilitate consistent zoning with the larger parent parcel. We also find that this is a reasonable use in conjunction with an existing utility facility, and we are recommending the following specific conditions of development. A six-foot tall decorative site-proof fence, landscaping surrounding the tower area to maintain the existing tree cover, and note that the property owner will need to petition the board of zoning adjustment regarding the southern setback. So at this time, I would like to request a motion.
Okay, we need a motion. We have a first, we have a second?
I make a motion. Our second motion.
Okay. It's on the floor, so go ahead, Bill.
Could you go over again the thing that they have to petition, the zoning?
Sure. So that's shown in the, the smaller exhibit. The, the location of the tower is marked with the X, and it's about 80 feet from the southern property line. So the zoning ordinance says that it's a 146-foot tall tower, so it needs to be 146 feet from the closest residentially zoned property. So they'll, the only way that they can get relief from that, that requirement is to petition the board of zoning adjustment and show that they have a land use hardship that, that prevents them from meeting that requirement.
The other way is that we don't approve it.
Sure. You know, they have a smaller, a shorter tower.
How much could they take without going to BZA?
It would have to be, at that point, it'd have to be 87 feet.
Right.
Wow.
Right.
The difference?
So it'd have to be 87 feet to not go in front of the board of zoning adjustment for that relief.
Okay. They, they never answered my question to my satisfaction on, firstly said this tower would be for intercommunications just with their people, correct? That's it's the way they proposed it. Then when I asked would it be rented out or whatever to other entities, then all of a sudden they didn't know. So is this for Ameren use only?
So in my conversations with them when they were completing the application, the original intent is, is just for Ameren communications, but they want to go through this procedure. That way in the future, they could co-locate with other providers. If they did not intend to co-locate at all, this would be considered a public utility and wouldn't need to go through this process, but since they are, they want to get the zoning in lines, that way in the future, they could do that co-location. They didn't indicate when, but this would allow them to do co-location in the future. So they do want to prepare for that situation.
Okay. Why can't they move it to comply with the distance?
Right. So this, the, the utility facility is located in an, in an easement, so Ameren only has rights to this property in that easement, so they don't have the ability to move it, you know, 50 more feet or 60 more feet away because then they would no longer be in their lease area that they, where they have a lease from the Tesson Ridge developer.
And what's the problem with making it a shorter tower?
We, we did not ask them that. We are, we don't have the ability to, to have them justify that to us.
It seems like they get harder. Closer and closer to houses. That's what bothers me. I guess they gotta be there.
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay. Anybody want to be a second? Seeing none, the, the motion dies. What do you want to do at this point? Want to go the opposite direction?
I also had a question about their new telephone poles and everything. Why should that not be underground?
I, I don't know anything else about the Bauer Road project than, than what was presented tonight, since it's not, it's not directly connected to this telecom tower.
But it, but it is an item on here, is it not?
Oh, no. We just presented that information just because at public hearing, we had residents that voiced concerns about it.
Right.
So we just wanted to present information that we had gathered from Ameren, but nothing regarding that project is in front of the commission this evening.
Because as I look around, developments in other than populous, unincorporated counties, projects this size in neighborhoods of that type are all underground. And so I think we as a group in planning ought to start working with Ameren and whoever to put those utilities underground as, as other communities do.
I agree.
But since that's not a part of this, I kind of, you know, thought that it was because it was on me.
If we have no motion, does this go on hold or?
Well, I think you had, had a good point, you know, about can they move the tower? Can they lease more ground?
So staff can-
There just seems to be a lot of-
So staff can go back and ask. We can, what we can, we can go and ask the petitioner some of these questions and see if we can get some clarity. But what I want to, kind of like the conversation that we had with the tower that was down off of 44, out in West County. State and federal statutes really limit the ability of local governments to question the, the construction of telecommunications towers. Essentially, if an entity tells us that they need it, local government's ability to say no is, is extremely hampered. So I want to caution the commission that we may not get much information because they're not legally required to tell us.
But doesn't it matter if they're using it for their own, their own company as opposed to building it to make money off from letting other people use it?
Yes, but if-
I think that we're giving away whatever strength we do have by, by going ahead and pushing this through the way, the way they want it.
So what I will state is, is to echo some of what, what some of what Mel said, is that because they are a public utility, they even have, if they were only doing it exclusively for uses by Ameren Corporation, by the Ameren Corporation, because they are a public utility, they're even, they're even have more flexibility to be able to construct infrastructure as they, as they need it.
Yeah, if they need it.
If they-
But this tells me that they don't need it, or they would have went ahead and pulled it through anyway and just blew by us.
Well, yeah, and-
Why, why do they even-
That's why they're building it as high as they are for sharing it.
So we can-
For their communication, they wouldn't need it that high.
You know, so what I, you know, I think what I'm hearing is that if it's the will of the commission to, to place a hold on, on consideration of this petition while staff goes back to the petitioner and asks for some additional clarity on terms of its exact location and its exact height and see if we can get any further clarifying information from, from the petitioner.
And what, what options they should look at to address that issue for the commission.
We will go back and we will, I will see what we can get from them, but I, this is because the laws and statutes are written so strongly in favor of, of telecommunications towers companies, I just, you know, I may only be able to get limited information. So, but we will get what we can.
Absolutely.
That's it?
Okay. We need a motion to hold then. Take a motion to hold.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Eyes have it five zero, and you just put on hold. Next, we have PC 39-22.
So that, that one is actually under old business as well, and so the slides are there for, for under old business. So then we would be in old business, ready for action, 6A.
You're conserving paper.
It's double-sided, yes. Sorry.
What an idea.
So this is PC 0622 St. Louis County Planning Commission. This is a text amendment to consider changes to the zoning ordinance concerning fees, administration, and procedures of the zoning ordinance. So the commission may recall last year, early in 2022, adopting a resolution to initiate a petition on this topic and then holding a public hearing on the topic in February of 2022. Subsequently, this petition has been held and under not ready for action on the commission's agenda. So the purpose of this petition is to open up the zoning ordinance and look at the procedures and, and namely the fees in the zoning ordinance. That way, we can align them with, with the best practices that we operate under and that our peers operate under and to update our fees to, 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 to match today's cost of, of providing service. So the three main sections that the, this petition relates to are 1003, 179, the site plan review procedure, 210, the fees schedule, and then chapter 1003, section 300, procedures for amending the zoning ordinance, which covers how a property owner would petition the board for, or the commission for a change. However, the department finds that section 300 warrants its own study and does not recommend any modifications to that section at this time. So beginning with site plan review, this is the procedure in the zoning ordinance for when a new structure or building is, is developed, it must be shown on a site development plan approved by the Department of Planning in, in St. Louis County before any building permits can be issued. So this procedure was added into the zoning ordinance in 1984. It, it tells a, an applicant or a developer what must be shown on the site development plan, where the building is, where the parking is, lighting and landscaping. It also tells staff how to review and approve the site development plans. So which departments review it, which departments approve it? This involves transportation and public works, MoDOT and MSD, and then the Department of Planning. So the recommendations that we've included, first defining a site development plan. Right now, there is no definition of a site development plan, and we find that adding a definition would help staff in administration, but also help developers in their submittals. Additionally, we've, we've recommended some changes to clarify the, the roles and responsibilities that each reviewing department or agency has. We've also added and, and expanded on what's required on a site development plan in terms of lighting, making sure we get what we want in terms of a, a lighting plan that shows the lighting levels on the site plan, requirements like that. We also have added some additional information in terms of when comments from the county need to go out, a timeline for that, and then when a re-submittal has to be sent to the county. And additionally, a new, a new recommendation is to add an expiration of a site development plan. Right now, if you've got a site development plan approved, there's nothing that keeps a developer essentially from applying that approved site plan in 10 years or so, whether or not other regulations have changed. So we've recommended that a site development plan, once approved, lasts for two years. And then similarly to how a petitioner can come before the planning commission and request an extension of time to submit a site plan for a C8 or a CUP, we're recommending that developers be able to request an extension of time to, to utilize that approved site development plan when it's not governed by a special procedure. Last, and relating to some of the other recommendations I'm going to talk about, we're recommending to increase the fee for site development plan review. Right now, it's $100, no matter how many iterations and revisions it takes. We're recommending that the initial fee be $300, and then if that review extends beyond three reviews, an additional fee for each of those reviews. Moving on to fees, as I stated, section 210 governs most of the fees in the zoning ordinance, and the fees were established in 1965 with the adoption of the zoning ordinance and updated twice since then, once in the 80s and then once in the early 2000s. So it's been about every 20 years, the fees have been updated. And then for the commission's information, the, the state of Missouri does not allow local governments to charge fees in excess of cost. So, so the purpose of these increases are not to, you know, generate revenue, but instead to make sure that what we're charging matches up with what it costs to provide that service. So the, the recommendations in, in these next couple of slides are, as I stated, to increase the fees to correspond with the cost of providing services. And then there are a couple of services that the, the department provides that currently do not have fees. So to do this, we created a composite of $50 an hour for a staff member's time. So any planning department staff member, we're using a, a figure of $50 per hour to represent them providing service, and the way we got to that number was taking the department's budget, dividing it by 10 merit employees in the department, and then dividing that by 2,080 working hours in, in the calendar year, which comes out to 47, and then we've recommended rounding that up to, to 50 to account for changes in, in budgeting amounts. So the first fee I want to touch on is the, the change in zoning fee. Right now, when a petitioner wants to come before this planning commission, their fee, if they want to go from, say, C2 to R2, is based on the size of, of the petition tract. So you can see here in the bullets, smaller tracts, there's a $500 fee, and as the tract size goes up, so does the fee. However, we find that every zoning petition, regardless of the tract size, has generally the same amount of complexity to it in terms of reviewing an application, drafting the public hearing notice, notifying the public, et cetera. They all have that same amount of work. So we have recommended a, a application fee of $1,500, and this is based on our estimated amount of staff time that goes into that multiplied by that $50 an hour. So there is a sheet in front of you that's part of the report, but I also printed out a loose copy that shows all of these fee recommendations and the calculations that went into them. Similarly, when you request a special procedure or a planned district from this planning commission, most of those fees are also based on the acreage. However, the MXD procedure, the commercial industrial design development procedure, and the planned environment unit procedure each have a discrete fee. We are recommending a $1,500 fee for the special procedures. That's the CUP, the special business permit, because these are mostly comparable to a change in zoning in terms of complexity. However, for the planned districts, the C8, the PEUs, the M3s, those are a little more complex in terms of the conditions of development that need to be drafted and the analysis that goes into it. So we are recommending a $2,000 application fee for planned districts. This slide and this table shows through the years what, what fees we assessed were, and then using just an online inflation calculator, what, what that dollar amount would equal today. So going back to 1965, when you requested a C8 planned commercial district, it cost you $100. Today, that would cost you about $950. So you can see that the increases per inflation are, are mostly on par with, with what we've calculated as an appropriate fee today. So one service that we provide and that this planning commission is heavily involved in that does not have a fee is, is what we in this chamber would call a correspondence item. So when an applicant or a developer wants to change the permitted uses in a planned district or the conditions of a planned district or CUP, they send a request to this commission. The staff reviews that request to make sure it's appropriate to even bring before the commission, and if it is, we do a thorough analysis of their request and oftentimes a site development plan that goes along with that before bringing it to this commission for action. Right now, we don't charge a fee for that at all, and we find it appropriate, because these have a complexity similar to zoning petitions themselves, that we install a $500 ordinance amendment and special procedure or special permit amendment fee. So then there are a few fees that actually live outside of section 210 and live inside 200 administration enforcement and permits, and a couple of these are actually provided by the zoning enforcement office, which is in the Department of Transportation and Public Works. So they provide zoning verification, floodplain certification, and zoning compliance services. So, you know, often when, when property changes hands for title reasons, a developer or property owner will need zoning compliance or zoning verification from the county. Using the same sort of staff time composite and, and speaking with the, the division that provides that service, we recommend increasing that fee from $25 to $100 for zoning verification and zoning certification, or excuse me, floodplain certification, and then for zoning compliance, increasing it from 85 to $100 as well. The Department of Planning provides location verification for a couple of our buffered uses in the zoning ordinance, so marijuana facilities and self-storage facilities have a location, locational buffer criteria that has to be met, and in, in making sure that requirement is being met, the Department of Planning has to do an analysis and a review of that work as well. So we're recommending that that fee be increased from 100 to $200. So this is the, as I just mentioned, the table that shows the existing fees, the amount of staff time we estimate goes into that, into that service, and then the calculation and our proposed fee increase. I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission has.
I have two. Using these proposed amounts, how much additional revenue generated by these?
So as an example, the last page on the report, which I regret, I didn't print this one out for you as well, but I took the, all of the petitions from 2022 and the fees we charged them. So for the 38 petitions we had in 2022, we collected about $22,000. If those petitions had been assessed this recommended rate, it would have resulted in $60,000. So it is almost three times as much. It is substantial, but we find that it is reasonable and, and is tied to what we find is the real cost of the service.
Okay. And how do these fees compare with- Okay. And how do these fees compare with other entities?
Sure. So we did do some research about some of the localities here. We looked at what St. Charles County charges for their fees, and they are comparable. Everyone's a little different just in terms of their jurisdiction and the services they provide, but these are not out of, you know, these are comparable to other fees charged in this region and in counties that are similar in size to ours.
And we already have some of this information, so we can definitely...
Yes, we can share that as well.
I think she's answering the questions. That's fine. So, did I hear somewhere in your presentation, which was very good, did I hear an error that if I, as a resident, wanted to do a check of the property, that it's going to cost me $500 to do that?
No. So I think what you're referring to is zoning verification. So if you wanted to buy a piece of property and you didn't know what you could do there, you can submit a request for zoning verification. And right now, for one piece of property, it would cost you $25. If you sent a zoning verification request for two adjoining properties, it would only cost you $26. And so that the staff member who does that work has told us that it takes her at least two hours to do that.
The individual, unless they're buying properties, not affected by this?
Correct. Right. For your typical property owner, unless you need it for some sort of title purpose, you'll probably never need zoning verification or floodplains.
You can call the planning department, and we will answer questions.
Correct, correct. But if you...
Not intended. This is for, like, if you have special needs.
Yes, right. Informal, letting people know what a zoning district entails is free.
Good report.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do you need something from us on this at this point?
So this, we brought this, this is an information report. So just, you know, a recommendation.
And then we'll bring it to you as a letter of rec in a month.
Okay. Sounds good. Any commission sound? Get to asking, you know? I've been paid the same since 1991.
So yeah, I think, yeah, if we could get a, if it's through all the commission to have a motion to accept and to adopt this.
Okay, that's what I was asking. Someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval.
Second. Discussion. Seeing on all those in favor? Close. Eyes have it 5-0, and we'll go on to old business letters for approval.
So, do you want to do these separate, a couple of them?
Whatever you think.
Well, I'll go through them just because a couple of them have different recommendations. So for PC 3222, the commission had recommended denial of this request. This was a request for a new C8 to establish a childcare center. We have brought the letter of recommendation consistent with the commission's recommendations from December. 3422, this is a request for a new C8 down by the Sams on Lee May Ferry to allow a new car wash. This has been converted to be consistent with the commission's recommendation of approval from December. And then PC 35 and 3622 provision land development is a request for a change in zoning in a PEU off Vance Road. This is also consistent with the commission's recommendation of approval from December. And then 3922, I was going to go over briefly if the commission would like.
We got a motion then for the first four? Do you have a motion to accept them? We have a second discussion. Seeing on all those in favor? Close. Eyes have it 5-0. Now we'll do 39-22.
So as the commissioners who were here in December will recall, and then the commissioners who were not may recall, that the state of Missouri has enshrined in its constitution the right to adult-use marijuana. And in doing so, we are compelled to address the uses in the zoning ordinance, similar to how we addressed medical marijuana uses in 2019. So you can see this table here shows the existing medical uses and what districts they are permitted in. We are recommending that the medical uses be treated mostly in the same way that medical were, but there are a couple of other use types and conditions that require, we have some altered recommendations. So we are recommending that the definitions in the zoning ordinance essentially be updated to reflect marijuana facility instead of medical marijuana facility. We are recommending new definitions for marijuana transportation facilities, consumption facilities, and micro-business facilities. We are recommending a location buffer for dispensaries, which I will get into here in a moment. So one of the new facility types that did not exist for medical, the state allows micro-business marijuana facilities, which essentially are a smaller-scale marijuana facility, and the goal of this facility type is to allow for disadvantaged operators to get into the industry. So there's two types. There's a micro-business dispensary. We find that it is similar to the comprehensive dispensary, and it can be roped into that definition. But then there is the micro-business marijuana wholesale facility, which is sort of a combination of a cultivation facility and indoor manufacturing. So we are recommending a definition specific to that facility type, and that it be permitted in the industrial districts. Transportation facilities, they did exist in 2019 when the medical rules did come out, and we did not address them. So we find it is appropriate now to address these uses. This is essentially the middleman who gets the product from the dispensary to, from the cultivation facility to the dispensary or from one to the testing facility, essentially to move the product between licensed facilities. We find that this is appropriate in the industrial districts. It involves business vehicles and storage. So we find that it is appropriate where indoor cultivation and manufacturing is permitted. Then, as I alluded to earlier, right now, the marijuana facilities, the medical marijuana facilities are permitted in the C2 and the C3 shopping district when they meet the 1,000-foot buffer from places of worship, schools, and childcare centers. We are recommending that marijuana dispensaries be permitted by right in those districts when they meet the 1,000-foot buffer, but then also when they are 500 feet from any then-existing marijuana dispensary or packaged liquor store. And then if they do not meet that 500-foot buffer, the use becomes conditional. So if it meets the 1,000-foot from the sensitive uses and 500 feet from a dispensary or packaged liquor store, it would be permitted by right. They all have to meet the 1,000-foot buffer, but if it does not meet that 500-foot buffer, then the use would be conditional, and they would have to come before this commission. So I have a couple of maps that show the existing, the couple of existing marijuana facilities in the county. What this mostly shows is the existence of places of worship, schools, or daycares and packaged liquor facilities. And you can see that this buffer would preclude these uses from clustering right next to each other, but it does not completely eliminate options for these uses to be sited along our commercial corridors. So here's a similar map showing South County. You can see near the mall, there's a dispensary, and you can see some of the other commercially-zoned properties where the use would be permitted meeting that buffer. So an additional new facility type, our reading of the rules from the state in that they allow a local jurisdiction to enact ordinances and regulations governing the time and place where marijuana can be consumed in public, including within designated areas such as places where it's prepared and served to a customer. So what we found is that this, in theory, could allow for a marijuana consumption facility, which would be similar to a bar or a restaurant where marijuana is sold and consumed on-site. So we do find that this use could be appropriate in our commercial corridors. However, we think it would be best if it was conditional to allow this commission a little bit of extra scrutiny to ensure that these uses are being cited appropriately as well. And then, just to make sure that everything lines up, there are a couple of other areas in the zoning ordinance where revisions are recommended. So we are recommending updates to the parking requirements, updating the hours of operation that were instilled on dispensary facilities, and then, as I stated earlier, in regards to 0622, increasing that fee for location verification. So this table shows where the uses are recommended to be permitted and where they are recommended to be conditional. I'm happy to answer any questions after a motion.
We need a motion to accept. Make a motion to accept the recommendation.
And this is as a letter of recommendation before you.
Discussion and questions?
I also have a question about what we approved the last time around. It really, and I know it doesn't apply now with new state law, but what are all those dispensaries? Are they able to change now their...
Yes.
...method of entrance and security and all that? No?
So in terms of security, I would not characterize any rules have changed. So it's just a secure, you know, you can't see basically what's in there from the outside. But in terms of the timeline, December 8th was when existing medical facilities could apply to become comprehensive facilities. And from what I can tell, every dispensary in the state of Missouri, save for maybe two, has applied to convert to a comprehensive facility.
Which means?
Which means they can sell medical marijuana and adult-use marijuana. So comprehensive is the term that the state is using to encompass medical and adult use.
Would they have to maintain their level of security?
Yes, yes, yes. And the ratio between staff and customers.
Do the same thing.
So they didn't, they did not come out with specific rules for marijuana consumption facilities. So the way we've drafted the definition is that that facility, you know, we've listed it as a permitted use in, or as a conditional use in districts, but it would still need to meet any rules and regulations set by the state. So they're essentially silent on it now, but essentially, we're planning for the scenario where one of these is proposed. So none have been proposed. The state hasn't made it clear that they would license these facilities, but in the event that they would be permitted to operate by the state, our definition states that they would be subject to other rules and ordinances.
What we're doing is we are trying to prevent a situation in which, one, an operator in the future tries to come into St. Louis County, and we don't have any regulations about it.
Right.
We're recommending a definition that's very broad, that says any, basically, any structure or place where you want to have onsite consumption of marijuana makes you, you are then defined as a consumption facility, and it's always conditional. It's not permitted, we're not recommending it be permitted by right anywhere in the zoning ordinance, that every single time someone wanted to do that, it would have to come to this commission to make sure that it meets and protects the health, safety, and welfare of our residents. The reason that staff is interested in this is because we are seeing these pop up in other jurisdictions around the country where this use is permitted. And while I can't, I don't have a crystal ball, we just suspect that there's a world where we may be, you know, where we may want to, where that may come to us, and we want to be...
Right.
And that deals with consumption onsite?
Yes.
Okay. What about purchasing it, just purchasing it and taking it out? Are there any controls like the existing marijuana, where you need a prescription and this and all that? Is that all changed?
So essentially, you're permitted to use it on private property. There aren't, you know, the county regulations have not been updated in terms of, you know, marijuana as a misdemeanor and smoking in public as a misdemeanor. And, you know, that's beyond the scope of our discussion. But, I mean, I don't think you can consume it on the street, but the definition we drafted is a facility where marijuana or marijuana-infused products may be consumed within the confines of the facility in accordance with applicable law and regulations. But aside from that, the consumption, I imagine, is mostly supposed to occur on private property.
I understand that, I think. But my question is more directed at the current outlets for, this always required a prescription. You won't need a prescription no more.
No.
That is correct.
No, you just need to be 21.
So, need to be 21? You don't, they won't need the security level at these other places that they prior now had to set up?
My reading, and I believe, you know, our reading of the state, of the state's rules, is that all the interior security that exists now continues into the future.
Partly because the comprehensive facilities are still the ones that provide medical marijuana. So essentially, all of the rules of medical marijuana apply.
Correct. So there's no, there won't be any ability for a marijuana facility, a marijuana dispensary, to remove all the security that they have and just have like an open glass door, and you just walk in. It's still going to be, you walk into a vestibule where they check you in.
My understanding, the difference is medical marijuana would be maybe much stronger than what you can buy somewhere else.
I wouldn't even...
Not necessarily. The taxing is different. There's a 4% tax on medical and a 6% tax on adult use.
And the quantity, I believe.
And the, yes, the quantity is different.
Yes.
Okay.
Psycho tax on bourbon versus the tax on scotch. More medical?
Yes, yes. Medical has a lower tax rate, adult use has a higher tax rate, and as a medical cardholder, you will be able to have more, you'll be able to purchase more product than just if you're 21 or over and go in for just adult use.
And then also in terms of timeline, December 8th was when facilities could apply to convert from medical to comprehensive, and the state said that they will take 60 days to review those applications. So we're looking at February 6th is the first date where, per the state, a facility could sell marijuana in the state of Missouri.
Okay. Thank you.
Did we send you requests?
I got one call from an exit, you know, a medical facility who was looking to see what kind of verification they might need to convert. But the facilities that are converting do not need any additional zoning verification, but any new facilities would be subject to these recommendations if they were codified. And any, say there were two dispensaries right next to each other right now, and they both converted to comprehensive, their inability to meet that buffer would essentially just make them legal non-conforming.
Okay. Anyone else? We have a motion to accept. All those in favor? Close. Eyes have it 5-0. And next, we've got 111-85 Mills Properties.
Alrighty. PC 111-85 Mills Properties was a request for an amended C8 ordinance of ordinance 12,500 for 10.01 acres located on the northeast side of Lindbergh Boulevard, southeast of Lee May Ferry Road. As you may recall, this is a site in South County, and the track is outlined in red. Just a little recap. So on December 12th, 2022, it was requested to allow, the request came in to allow all C2 shopping district uses at this site, to allow for more flexibility to find tenants, and for all C2 shopping, we recommended as a staff for all C2 shopping district uses permitted without a conditional use permit, and to make sure marijuana facilities would not be appropriate at this site. At the, at that meeting, we were asked by a few of the commissioners to indicate which C2 shopping district uses would be appropriate at this site. So staff has brought back this correspondence item with the proposed amendment to the ordinance allowing the following uses: offices, medical and dental offices, general, retail, personal services, restaurants, and then that marijuana facilities shall not be permitted on-site. The ordinance as is right now allows for educational, religious, and community service uses, including a childcare center and a telecommunications tower. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
We need a motion?
Oh, I'll make a motion.
Do you have a second?
A second.
Discussion, anyone? Seeing on all those in favor? Close. Eyes have it 5-0, and we've got two site plans.
While we wait for Paul to come up, Gretchen, would you just go outside and make sure in case people are coming up?
Yeah, well, Asher got there.
Thank you.
Yep.
Sorry about that.
All right. So are you guys wanting to do these all in one, or how would you like to do that?
We can do them all together.
Okay, so I think you're good.
So we need a motion. So we need a motion on the site plans.
Okay, we need a motion to accept the site plans. What's that?
Make a motion to accept the site plan.
Okay, we have a second? Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Close, eyes have it five zero. And then for the good.
Uh, yeah, so, good evening, commissioners. It's been a while, so thanks for having me back. As you recall, probably about nine months ago or so, the planning department started drafting a request for proposals for the next conference of plan for St. Louis County. We've tentatively or currently are titling it St. Louis County 2015 Equitable and Sustainable Conference of Plan. And I'm here to provide an update on the work we've done so far and and what, what lies ahead. So to start, I want to talk about what is a comprehensive plan and why we need a comprehensive plan. And so a comprehensive plan is a policy framework for achieving the community's aspirations and 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 goals as sort of defined through a outreach and engagement process that will happen over the next several months. It examines connections between economic, social and environmental issues, analyzes existing conditions of the built environment as they are today. And so as we set goals moving forward, we'll be, we'll be able to to track and measure our progress towards achieving those. And additionally, it will guide the county in preparing annual budgets and in operations, making policy decisions as well as making any new or amended regulations. So why, why should we have a comprehensive plan? To start, we're mandated by the charter to prepare a comprehensive plan for adoption by the county council as presented by the planning commission. And the last time St. Louis County adopted a comprehensive plan was 1980. There was an update in 1985 and we haven't had one since. So we're a little overdue for for having a new plan. Because they're typically documents that have a 20 to 25 year lifecycle, which is why we've landed on St. Louis County 2050. Additionally, it will provide direction for what we want the built environment in our community to look like. You know, as I was mentioning on the the previous slide, the existing land use, the infrastructure, the economic development initiatives, programs that need to be implemented or adopted to get us where we want to go. And it will prepare future local government decision making and resource allocation as well as promoting an equitable and sustainable community growth and improved quality of life. Additionally, the state zoning enabling legislation requires jurisdictions to adopt a comprehensive plan if they want to have zoning. So if we want to continue regulating the use of land, we need a comprehensive plan. So this timeline is sort of outlining steps we've taken, where we are now and and what the process is going to look like moving forward. So we issued the RFP late December. We are currently soliciting responses to a business profile and experience survey that's due at the end of this month. And there will be a mandatory pre-proposal meeting for those respondents to attend where they can ask questions about the the RFP on February eighth. The written proposals themselves are due mid-March, and then we'll take the rest of March and most of April to review proposals post two or three consultants for in-person oral presentations. Then a final decision will be made and hopefully a contract will be awarded by the end of June. And so once the contract is awarded, the consultant is is going to hit the ground running with the planning facilitation process that will take most of, if not all of, the rest of this year. And then working through that, the drafting of the actual document, we anticipate adoption of the plan first quarter of 2025. So we have five deliverables outlined in the request for proposals. And the first and probably most important is the planning process facilitation. And then we have the the document itself. And we're also requesting consultants propose a interactive comprehensive plan mapping tool. And then we're requesting their assistance with plan adoption and implementation recommendations. So the planning process facilitation is outreach and engagement that will target residents, industry, academia, nonprofits, really any interested parties in what the built environment looks like, what they want St. Louis County to look like moving forward over the next 25 years. We anticipate this will be both in-person through working group meetings or or other type meetings, as well as town halls in each council district, as well as a online or virtual component, either for those town halls, as well as online surveys, comment portal, interactive website that residents can can engage with the planning process in. Now, the document itself will guide planning and zoning decision making over the next 25 years. It will address the following elements, housing, transportation, economic development, open space, culture, arts and entertainment, utilities and infrastructure, and inter and intragovernmental processes in cooperation, meaning how departments within St. Louis County work together to improve our community as well as how the county can work with other jurisdictions within the county to to reach our goals. Additionally, the plan will have stated goals and implementation recommendations. And all of these elements that I just listed are evaluated through a lens of sustainability and equity. So the the mapping tool is, we're envisioning a custom mapping tool that would enable the department to conduct scenario planning, forecasting, modeling as we evaluate development proposals. And we would use the plan itself when we're analyzing impacts of development, zoning petition that that comes before you will be analyzed as this in accordance with the comprehensive plan or not. Any or other potential users or uses could be the Department of Public Health, Transportation and Public Works, Human Services, Community Development, could all make use of this plan in their work or this mapping tool in their work, as well as the possibility of contracting with lower capacity municipalities that don't have the resources or the staff to engage in planning and zoning in the way that the county does to provide those services for them for their benefit. And then the plan adoption is is pretty straightforward. We're asking the the consultant to assist the department and the planning commission with moving the plan through the legislative process at the county council to have the plan finally adopted. And then implementation recommendations. There are recommendations that are part of the the document itself, but beyond just listing sort of this is what we recommend you do to to reach your goals. And we're asking for concrete steps on how we can achieve those goals. What are the policy decisions that need to be made? What are the programs that may or may not need to be implemented to to reach these goals? And then there's an opportunity for an optional contract extension with the consultant for potential program development to to help us design how that might, how that might look. We've created a website, I think Mel's going to pull it up for us. StLouisCounty2050.com is the URL. Currently, it is geared towards the RFP process, since that's what we're going through right now. I think Mel has it up, great. So it's, it's a, the main page has a sort of brief descriptor of of what we're looking to do with the comprehensive plan. The RFP, if you click on that link, it takes you to the the document itself. And so if you are having trouble sleeping, you can read the the 50 or so pages of legalese that is the RFP. And then also there's a scoring matrix that's provided that is informational to to, both for the public to know what we're evaluating respondents on, but also for respondents to know what they're being scored on, so they can put the best proposal forward. And then as any addenda to the RFP will be posted on this page. RFP resources is just a a collection of maps, reports, plans that are currently existing, created by the county or other entities that might be of interest or use to the general public, but also might be helpful for a potential respondent. And then the all submissions will will be done through the this website. But what I really want to draw your attention to is the subscribe button. I would ask all of you to do this tonight or tomorrow. This is the best way to receive information or updates about the RFP process and the plan as well. Anytime an update or an addendum is posted, you'll be notified that there's been an addendum posted or a change. So you'll always be, just get an email and it'll let you know what what's happening. And then additionally, we're requesting questions and comments, kind of to audiences, residents who want to be involved in the process. We're asking them to submit questions or comments right now instead of waiting four months until we have a consultant to begin sort of generating ideas about who might be interested in working with us on this, who we should reach out to as we begin the the planning facilitation process. Then additionally, this is the place for potential respondents to provide questions about the RFP itself. So that's pretty much it. Any questions about anything?
Anyone?
At what point would you expect to provide a status, progress to the planning commission as you go through this process?
Yeah, so I would anticipate the next update that we would provide is once a a contract has been awarded, and then once the planning process begins, will, we, the the planning department, as well as the consultant, will be providing regularly updates. We haven't worked out a schedule quite, quite yet. But I would anticipate at a minimum quarterly, if not more frequently, presenting to the commission, you know, what what's been happening and what's going on.
Because for us to do our job, I think we need periodic updates. Because if you give us a, import this thick or this thick.
Right.
That's going to be very difficult to digest in in a week or two.
Oh, that's, that's not, that's not the.
No, no, no.
Yeah. Yeah. And and I would say it goes beyond just updates as well. I think we would ask each of you to to participate
Yes.
in in this process. So you'll, you'll hopefully know sort of all along through this process, you know, what's being discussed, what potential proposals might be. And but as we'll also give formal updates to the commissioner.
Correct.
Fantastic.
I think there will be an opportunity when we, I think, you know, when we, an opportunity when we get a consultant selected to help organize this commission to to, you know, to take real ownership and real interest in this, in this document. Because ultimately, it comes out of, sure, the planning department's doing the work, but the commission, it's your recommendation. So that we're sending this off with with your all stamp of approval, so. Thank you.
Sounds good. Anyone else? Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, absolutely.
Appreciate it. Anything else?
I think Jacob, did you have one thing you wanted to say?
I'd forgotten. So I wanted to just inform the commission that it is my honor that I was asked by Dr. Page to be the permanent director of planning. And I have accepted that. So I hope that sometime in the month of January, the council will concur and confirm me. And if that is the case, I will be permanent. And if that is not the case, then.
We'll invite you to the meeting.
You can sit way back there.
Exactly, I'll be, I may be in the audience, so. But yes, I just wanted to let everyone know.
Congratulations.
I appreciate it, I appreciate it.
We always thought you were permanent.
It feels like that.
Any other good news? We're only taking good news. Seeing none, we need a motion to adjourn. We have a second? Discussion, seeing no one, all in favor? Close, eyes have it five zero, and we are adjourned.
Shall we wait just?